I'm going to bring the September 3, 2020 Dunbar and Select Board meeting to order. Leo Martell will be videotaping this meeting tonight, and Linda Nickerson will be posting on Dunbar and website and on YouTube. We have a full Select Board present here tonight, and the town administrator. We also have the police chief, Dan Spedel here. Sergeant Rommel is here. Chuck Ross, the Chair of the Planning Board. Ken Swayze, the past Chair and current Secretary. And Woody from the Transfer Station Supervisors present here tonight for town officials. I have some old business of the regular meeting minutes of August 20.
Motion to approve the regular minutes of the August 20 as amended.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second? Motion's been made, second. All favor?
Aye.
Okay. He's on for signatures, Mike.
We also had a non-public session, I agree.
Yep. I've got another non-public meeting minutes from the last meeting. Do I have a motion on the table for those?
So moved.
Okay. Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made, second. All favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'm going to open this up for public comment with anybody not on the agenda if they want to start out any public comment tonight. Nothing? Okay. We'll also have a public comment at the end of the meeting as well. We're going to go to town business now, and we've got attorney Pat Pantiaco and Mike Gani for discussion on subdivision of Kelsey Road. And I'm going to, at this point, step down from the meeting, and I'm going to have Mike take over as co-chair of the meeting and run the meeting from here on out. We're not going to switch seats around because of the COVID-19, so he's going to run it from that end of the table.
Welcome, Pat. Welcome, Mike. I mean, I've got bits and pieces from building department that you pursue in a subdivision, and I'm going to open it for them to you. The thing is, there were some concerns, and I'm going to let you bring them up to the board and talk to us about it. And the thing is, when I say to the board, Dave, as a butter is recused, is Bob, Martell, and myself.
Okay. Okay. So my name for the record is Pat Pantiaco, and I want to thank you for making the time to meet with me, and I'll try to be brief. The reason I'm here is because earlier this year, after the Supreme Court issued its decision on Kelsey Road, I was contacted by the town attorney about to discuss potential needs for the turnaround at the end of Kelsey Road. And at that time, he mentioned that it was a bit of a tight fit, that town really needed something that would last longer than a year. And when I asked him about why the town didn't just work within the Class 6 right-of-way, because there's layout that goes all the way to Gostum, he told me that the board was reluctant to recognize the 1821 layout as true Kelsey Road due to concerns about offending one of the Select Board members. So I left that aside, and I said, okay, well, by all means, I'll talk to Mike. Could you show me a sketch? Show me what you're talking about. So this is what he sent me. This was, I think, put together by you. Does anyone else want them? And it helped us to better understand what the needs were. So from what I can see on this, you come down Kelsey Road, you keep going, you back into Mike's driveway, and see where it says drop-off area? That's an area that's very deep. From what Mike tells me, it's about 14, 15 feet deep.
12 feet.
That's not a good thing for a town truck. But nonetheless, I hadn't talked to him at that time, but when I brought the sketch, because I was trying to strive for clarity here, I don't want any more arguing and fighting with the town with Dunbar, I showed the sketch to Mike and his engineer, and they explained to me the issues that are shown on the plan. And notwithstanding, Mike wants absolutely nothing to do with town trucks on his land, and you really can't blame him. He's allowed the town to use his land now for 20 years to turn around trucks, and his generosity blew up in his face and cost him above board of money. And then he had to sit at the courthouse and watch all the town officials testify against his case. Notwithstanding, he does plan to submit a subdivision plan to the town to create five frontage lots. He realizes the town also needs a suitable turnaround. Now, the last time he came to the board and submitted an application, there was a proposal to improve the Class 6 link of the 1821 layout extending to Gostum, and there were a number of waivers submitted with the application to reduce the level of construction, because it actually, it's a disconnect. You've got to gravel road, and then you're going to a brand-new 65, 60-foot-wide paved Class 5 road built to today's standards. And it was pretty much thrown out because of that disconnect and too many waivers, we were told. So right now, the plan has been revised. He has now decided he's going to submit his plan. There are no waivers. It fully complies with town regulations, and he is willing to donate to the town whatever land the town needs to have a sufficient turnaround. It would be permanent, and he would like the board's support, because this is going to be his only contribution to the improvement of Kelsey Road. And because this isn't talking about improvements, it's donation of land, it really falls squarely within the Board of Selectmen's jurisdiction. I've been told on a number of occasions by various people here that the Board of Selectmen has kind of pumped the idea of dealing with town roads to the planning board. And as to off-site improvements, I can understand that to some degree, but the town roads are the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen under 4111. I don't agree that you conduct the issue wholesale and avoid making any decision or recommendation regarding what has become a glaring town need now for 20 years, because you are in charge of the town roads. You're in charge of the town trucks and the employees who drive them, and those matters don't fall within the planning board's jurisdiction. So Mike's plan does not contemplate any waivers. He's looking for his frontage lots. The plan complies with the subdivision regulations. He just wants to be treated equally here. He bought the property in 1999. At that time, there were two houses on the road, his home and the log cabin. Since then, this denalt has created or built on six lots, all of which use Kelsey Road for access. He's paid one impact fee for a culvert that's expired. All of those impact fees being held by the town right now, we looked them up in the annual report. You've had all of them for more than six years, and you're obligated to return them with interest under the statute. And from Mike's observations, the culvert has really never been fixed. Back in 2006, despite Mike's objections and the planning board having already started to assess off-site exactions on various people doing subdivisions for roads, he told the zoning board, what about the condition of Kelsey Road? Chairman Trotier told him, quote, "Kelsey Road's good enough for three more houses." When the next two lots came down the pipe, there was one feet hay. It missed an alt due to get that back, because it's still listed in the annual report, and I presume it hasn't been applied, with a proportionate share from the town to match it for capital improvement to the road. So with that said, I would like to make the offer, and that's why I'm here, is to make this offer to the town formal. Mike has settled down. We've talked a lot about this. He really didn't want to do anything for the town, but he also recognizes it wasn't really the town that is the cause of all this. There's a whole lot of factors that were at play. And he is willing to provide a permanent solution to the town's ongoing need, which is still out there, for a permanent turnaround at the end of Kelsey Road. But that's his one offer to contribute to Kelsey Road being improved. And we really would like your support or recommendation, and we are not asking you to approve his subdivision plan. To be clear, because this is your road, and you're responsible for it. It's not the planning board's job to take care of an existing road. And that's really all I have to say. Any questions?
I'm gracious that there's an offer on the table. I think, as I have not seen, or my understanding, there's no conceptual plan of what's going on with any subdivision.
I thought it, yeah.
But I haven't seen it, and I don't think the planning board has seen it either. And so for Bob and I to sit here as selectmen and make a decision, we approve it, or don't approve it, or we love it, premature, in the sense that we have a mechanism for doing that, and it does involve our planning board. And with any subdivision, roads are an integral part of any subdivision. In fact, I found out by working on the planning board, it's usually not the subdivisions that are the problem, it's the road. That's the most sticking figure, the most sticky point there is in any subdivision, because the roads are costly.
Yes, they are.
And I think the offer is gracious, but I am not prepared at this time, without having planning board recommendations, input from the planning board. I don't want to cut them off at the knees. There may be a problem that I'm not seeing. And I know you say it's not that privy to the planning board, but the planning board is difficult to making sure this town is built correctly, and part of that includes roads. And subdivisions sometimes includes roads. So without even knowing your plan, I'm going to have to say, I'm grateful for the offer, maybe. I think it warrants consideration, and I think we can move on from there.
That's fine.
I think we should use the process, and the process, again, it's, I've been on the board, and I've served on the planning board too as segments rep. I'm learning the process along the way, and got to keep some open communication, but first step in the process is to talk to Donna, get the application procedures down.
And we will do that.
Right. Second step, which is optional, is to sit with the entire planning board and do a conceptual. That is not required, but sometimes that can lead to success, in the sense that the planning board members may find, you've got a problem here. This is going to be a...
That's fine.
And the thing is, usually it's non-binding, in the sense that they're going to give you advice, but the advice they give you is so you're successful as you navigate through the planning board. And it's a navigation. It's not up or down all the time. And in the planning board, there's a give and take. And there's a give and take, or, I'll give you example, sometimes they want to do cluster housing, sometimes they want to do, prepare the road in lieu of an exaction fee. Planning board can do that sometimes.
And we're not opposed to that, Mr. Kaminski. We realize, we don't know whether you want circle, whether you want a hammerhead, do you want a square? That's all open for discussion. We're not asking for you to approve anything in particular.
Right. And the thing is, even without having full knowledge, I don't think Bob and I, I'm not going to speak for you, but I know I can't make a recommendation at this time. I'm honored and I'm gracious that there's an offer on the table. However, I would like to have input from my own planning board, their community volunteers who help on this board, and they don't get paid for what they do, they just try to do the right thing for the community. They have a set of regulations they go through, and some of it includes roads, and roads specifications, and turnarounds. And I do know that one fact is, a turnaround is needed.
Exactly.
The thing is, but without a turnaround, I talked to the road agents, and what's the alternative? If Mike doesn't want us on his property at all, what's the alternative? He plows up and backs down. Very difficult for all parties. And so I don't want that. I don't think Mike wants that. But the thing is, I want to assure you one thing, though. Mr. Nault here, I know you've mentioned him, and the thing is, he's...
Well, he's an integral part of here, I'll give you...
Right. I want to assure you, through this process, that I will fight to make sure that this process is still kept above-board honest, in the sense that he's going to recuse himself from this portion. He's also going to recuse himself on the planning board portion, because he's a segments rep. I'm the ultimate, and I will probably stand in because of the potential butter situation.
That would be great.
But I assure you, we're going to try to do the right thing and be fair.
That's really what's been missing here, because as I said to you, he wants to be treated equally.
And...
And that hasn't happened so far.
Under my...
Not from his viewpoint, anyway. And I agree with him.
Well, I disagree with that, because under my watch, and Bob's watch on the board, we've been painstakingly, Bob and I have been painstakingly detailed, and just with this gentleman, he can be a challenge sometimes. We have to exclude him from a lot of stuff, and we do that, and he knows that, but we have to exclude him because it's a conflict of interest.
That's right, and I appreciate that. And I'm not looking to box you in a corner.
Okay.
That's not my point here. My point here is twofold. I feel, from a legal perspective, we need to come to you first, because it's your road. Now, if you want to defer as to design and sculpt and all that stuff to the planning board, we're fine with that.
And that's where I'm going with that. I want to make sure Bob's on that.
Well, what I would like to hear is you would be very open to hearing that from everybody that would reach some consensus on a permanent solution for the town for your turnaround.
Conceptually, it sounds good, but the thing is, I'm only hearing from one side. I got to hear from my planning board. And the thing is, for me to cut their knees off without taking any, or listening to input, is like, I would be held up to dry.
I'm not asking you to do that. I'm asking you, as a selectman, and Mr. Martell is a selectman, just for some feedback, because I think it was going a long way towards solving a lot of problems out there.
I'm going to let Bob chime in.
You're kind of echoing my sentiments, because I don't want to do a misstep and find out there may be a little more that clouds us than there is. And I would like to hear from the planning board, just to see what direction is going to, and you already talked about whether it's a hammerhead or whatever.
We're open.
We'd like to hear what comes out at the planning board, and what they can come back to us and recommend, that they ironed out with all the parties.
That's exactly what we would like to see, is some collaboration there. But as I represented to you, we feel is that that is more than adequate for us to give you a permanent solution, for you to safely turn your trucks around. Now, I understand you're not going to want to make a decision on that, but we feel that would be on a par with the equal treatment here.
Believe me, it's probably greatly appreciated by even the road agent, you know, knowing that he has a definite solution.
I would assume...
And it's just in what direction we're going to go with him. I'd like to hear from the board that's going to be looking at all of this, you know?
Would you want us to come back to you, or just rely on the planning board's feedback to you?
At this point, I feel confident that the planning board is going to be fair. And the thing is, if there's an issue, or in fact, I'm going to open this up. If during any process in this town, if there's a problem of someone not being fair or unfair to you, you can always come to the Select Board. We have an ethics committee, and the thing is, we are open for that. But put that aside, we have a process, and the process that I'm asking you to go through is to go through the planning board, go through the process, use some of the courtesy conceptual design meetings to talk to them, get a feel for it. Historically, I know that, I've been shared the information that Mike put an application in, and it had a lot of waivers, and it had a lot of challenges in it, and it was never made the light of day into the planning board. I don't know if...
That was an oversimplification, because the waivers only apply to the extension of the Class 6 road. The rest of it was...
That was before my time.
Right.
So I'm not going to comment on that, except that I knew it had challenges. And the thing is, but the thing is, usually, with the planning board itself, there's conceptual, so they can identify the potential areas, which would be controversial, that you need to address before you get to an area where, basically, at the planning board, you go nowhere. And there's a variety of people on the planning board. We have a road agent who's on the planning board. We have engineers on the planning board. God forbid engineers, I know, we can't deal with that. But there's a variety of people, and they bring different perspectives, and the thing is, I respect them all.
And we're open to that process. Like I said, I just feel as though we need to come here first, and if that's how you would like us to proceed, that's exactly what we will do. And hopefully, we can resolve it and walk away with a win for everybody.
And I'm going to be, you may not like the decision, but the thing is, I may, but I'm going to, I think they'll be fair. At the end of the day, you look at, they'll be fair.
It hasn't always been the case, and I know you know that, and that was before your time.
Right.
So hopefully, that this will be a change. This will be good.
Additionally, if the planning board and you can't come to some kind of agreement, and they come to us, I think you'd be offered to come in and rebut whatever they have to say anyhow, so at least we hear the two sides as to why we're going in a certain direction.
That would be really, that's really helpful to know. Okay, so you have anything else you wanted to say? Did you have anything else you wanted to add, Mike?
No.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're hoping to be able to work collaboratively with them. I think they're all set to move forward.
Initially, I would continue to have discussions with Donna. She's the administrator there. She's responsible for preparing the paperwork for the planning board.
Yes.
And as I said, the optional meeting you have is a conceptual. That's where you'll go before the whole planning board. Usually, it's non-binding, but they can at least review the application without making any commitments or something, but at least identify areas which could potentially be problematic.
Okay.
And that's important, because what you don't want to do is get into a session, which I've seen them, where an applicant comes in, application is complete, or such a problem with the application, they say, we're going to put it on hold, and it delays a month, and it's another month, and you don't want that to go on forever. It's not fair to the applicant, and I think the conceptual meeting is a step in making it so at least he knows where he stands and what he has to get done to make it successful.
And I think he's ready to move there, but like I said, I felt as though we needed to come here, and he's off to the races now.
I hear you a lot, and clear.
Okay. So I have your input. You like the idea, you're just open to what the planning board has to say? I understand that.
Can I ask something?
Sure.
I want to ask Mike after we get out of here.
Sure.
You're probably not going to do a subdivision till next spring. We start, I mean, breaking ground and doing all sorts of stuff. Please ask your client to talk about what we can do for this winter. Winter's going to be upon us sooner than later. And the thing is, we had a solution last year, and at the end, and we really, it was all over handshake, it wasn't really anything in writing per se, but we need to get something established for this coming winter, of how we want to handle it.
Well...
And the thing is, I'll leave it at that, and the thing is, I would look forward to Mike's input through you or whatever. So I want to make sure that the road is plowed in a timely manner this year, and if we can use the turnaround that's there, and again, it has nothing to do with the planning board process, this is just immediate concern for the coming winter. And I share that with you, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so you kind of want to give beforehand?
No, not the gift, not the complete turnaround, because if you look at the history of it, there were two turnarounds. One area, which was used historically for many years, Mike has elected, asked last year based on the court decision, for us to no longer use that. I have to respect that, and the thing is, we did. I think we were off by one week. It wasn't like one week we were off. But the thing is, we were on there when you wanted us. I was there, when we were plowing last winter. But the thing is, Mike had let us use the load, the newer turnaround as interim one, and I would like to have some sort of arrangement this winter until we get to a final solution.
Okay, well, we'll talk about it.
That's all I ask.
Okay.
And the thing is, I want to be fair to everybody, and the thing is, we laugh about it, but it didn't snow in a Halloween winter.
It does sometimes.
So I don't want to catch anyone off...
But it's rough with the weather.
I don't want to catch anyone off guard, and Farmer's Almanac has already stated that it's going to be a snowy winter.
Oh, dear. Yeah. Well, we kind of need to...
Okay, yes. Okay, well, I want to say thank you for coming in.
Well, and we do not want any more trouble with the timely Dunbar, and we want this over.
Yeah.
I have one question for you as a resident. You said that you built six homes on Kelsey Road?
No, I didn't say you built six. I said you created lots or have approvals to build six homes.
You built six.
Five.
Okay, Dave...
They used the road, and it was not been paved, so we're looking to fairness here, that's all.
Thank you, Dr. Kaminski.
Thank you.
Mike, thank you.
It's nice to meet you.
Likewise.
Okay. Should I get back to you directly?
No, I would work through Donna, the administrator.
Call Donna with...
And the thing is, she will help you go through the steps of the application, and when the application is complete...
Hold that pipe.
Right. When the application is complete...
Ed Rogers will do all that.
Right. However, when it comes to the plowing for this immediate winter, you can feel free to email the board or lean Kamol.
Okay. I can do that.
Please.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you guys for coming in. Okay. Thank you, Mike. Thanks for hearing that portion. We're going to move on. Rainy elects here.
Somewhere.
There it is. I put these glasses, and focus on them.
It's these masks, you know?
We're looking for an election update.
Okay. How deep into the weeds do you want to get? I think we're in pretty good shape. We've all been updated on the emails between the school board and the children coming to school or not coming to school, and the police chief. And so we've all been updated and kind of read those emails and followed that through as it went along with the school board chair and the chief.
I've already begun to try to get word out to town residents that there will be times of heavier traffic, and that if they have flexibility in their schedule on voting day, that they might want to avoid those times. The pickup and drop-off has been rerouted?
It's been, well, we've actually gone back and forth a couple of times on that. We're going to keep the current pattern. They're going to delay drop-off by 45 minutes or so, which should get us past the time we have the influx of 7 o'clock voters going to work. So it should mitigate that, and it's going to take a lot of the steam out of this, a lot of the traffic. The potential for a traffic problem is pretty high, yeah.
If we're back to the kids being dropped off at the community center?
No.
Oh, okay.
They're going to be dropped off in the back.
Okay, good.
So you don't have to worry about that. The only thing you're going to have by the community center are going to be the parents after they drop the kids off, are going to mix with that traffic.
Driving out.
You know, with the cars that are backing in and pulling in and out.
So the turnaround in the upper parking lot then?
There won't be any turnarounds, it's going to be one way.
One way.
To the drop-off, yeah.
At the upper parking lot.
If by the police fire building, you're going to enter there, drive around through the access road around the back, drop off at probably the recess doors, and then continue on in and out.
Okay.
It's about the best we can do with what we have.
Okay.
We'll make it work somehow.
It will also be helped by, they stagger the times, the buses will be getting there earlier, parent drop-off will be a little later than usual. I found that the school board and Owen, the principal, were, they were very open to really trying to look at the whole picture, not just their needs, and that was helpful. I think we came up with a...
I think all the parties are working together very well for...
Are they doing lunch in class?
Yep. And lunches will be brought up, kids won't come down.
Did you expand your layout from earlier?
I did. In fact, our conversation before gave me a couple of ideas to give us a little more space in the, around the, where the, excuse me, voting booths and voting screens would be.
We have Woody here tonight as well. He's going to be the workforce, part of the workforce you have coming there. I'm not going to be available Friday morning, but I understand you guys are doing the setup in the morning?
Nine o'clock.
Okay.
Woody, how many, how many people on the crew with you?
Two others. Yeah, there's three of us total.
It'll be, it'll be a little longer setup than usual. We may have to set it up, see how it looks and feels, if there's really six feet from here to there, so there might be a little movement stuff around a second time, but...
I explained that, but it'll be a little longer than normal.
I think we should be fine. So I know that you're also aware that the state...
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Sorry about that.
But the state... But the state, um, the, uh, the legislature passed, uh, some laws specific to the two elections for the rest of this year and how we deal with absentee ballots. Basically, uh, there was recognition that, uh, processing absentee ballots takes, uh, quite a, quite a bit of time on election day, that, um, there's, um, yeah, there's a good chance we already do. We know we have many more absentee ballots than usual. Um, we're at, we're over two hundred now. And, uh, the most we ever had before was for the presidential election. That was just a hundred and ten. So, uh, it helps us to have people not come into the voting space. It, it helps us to, to deal with, um, social distancing. But, uh, it could've been a logjam, uh, trying to process all of those. So we had the, uh, the, uh, possibility, in fact, we made use of it today, of pre-processing, pre-processing some of those ballots. We didn't open the ballots, we didn't cast the ballots. But we gave the community an opportunity to challenge any of the votes. And that's a, that's an important part of how we process the absentee ballots.
So you guys noticed that properly, the meeting?
We did. We did.
Okay.
Yeah. The requirement was a forty-eight hour notice. Spot on. We didn't, the meeting, they actually didn't get into full swing till about one thirty. So they had forty-eight hours and one, forty-seven, forty-nine hours notice.
So it's very important for us to make, um, the possibility of challenging someone's right to vote in town possible. We, you know, it's very important that that happened. Um, but, but also just recognizing what has actually happened. In the four years that I've been moderator, we've had one ballot challenged. It just doesn't come up, hasn't come up much, but, but there was the opportunity today. I think we're very well organized to cast all those ballots, uh, pretty quickly on Tuesday. And, uh, we, uh, we built in checks and balances to make sure that our numbers were gonna be right, that the ballots that were gonna be cast would all be accounted for. So, um, um, Mike was there and, uh, Linda, I'm feeling confident in that process.
I, I wanna, I wanna still record, I could, I was very reassured, reassured that there was no evidence of any tampering, fraud or anything like that. And, uh, he had a three-way check on the number of ballots cast and I thought everything came out perfect.
And now are you gonna do that another time before the election or is that the only time?
No, the, the way that the law was set up, we only get the opportunity to do it once.
Okay.
Before this election and once again before the, uh, presidential.
What that means, if any votes come in between now and election day, those will be done the traditional way of reading the name out.
The absentee ballots that come in between now and then, uh, we'll do it the way we always do.
Randy, I showed something earlier to Linda. Uh, we were looking at this RSA for another notice. But I read down the line, it said, "No selectmen, moderator, town clerk or inspector of elections shall at the same time serve as a supervisor of the checklist."
Right.
Is that part of the process that we do when we're up there?
No.
It's not?
No, a supervisor of the checklist, um, deal exclusively with registering voters and managing the checklist.
And those are the people that are sitting down there?
Yeah, yeah. I've also checked, uh, both the Secretary of State's office and, excuse me, and, uh, with the New Hampshire Municipal Association about, um, how small towns like ours have, um, few election officials and those election officials are doing multiple roles during the day. Um, I ran by the idea of, um, appointing, say, um, I appoint a selectman as an assistant moderator or the town clerk appoints me as an assistant town clerk. These aren't exclusive roles as it turns out. We could've, either one of us could be elected to do both, which is weird, but it's true. Um, on, on the other hand, um, nobody can hold the office of selectman and moderator at the same time.
Or town clerk.
Or selectman and town clerk at the same time. Uh, but, 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 um, but those exclusions don't apply when, uh, someone is serving as an assistant moderator, assistant town clerk. So, um, from both parties, I was assured that our practice would be fine if we did that that day. And if I'm, I'm gonna piggyback on that idea a bit, 'cause, and I'm gonna need to do that that day. Um, I think that, um, it's gonna make sense for me to be outside greeting people for as much of the day as I can. And when I can't, it's gonna, not gonna be an official greeter. It's gonna be an assistant moderator who does. We're gonna ask people to wear masks. There is the possibility that some people may balk at that. Uh, and if they do, um, we're gonna insist that they wear a mask.
Yeah.
Uh, we've got two ways that people can vote, um, if they don't wanna wear masks. And we'll offer each one of those to those voters. Um, one involves using an absentee ballot, which has been okayed by the state legislature. And the other involves using that, kind of that extra part of the guardrail that I talked about that will be under the overhang near the closet in the back. Um, the, um, our discussions as moderators with the Secretary of State, the Secretary of State's office got together with the Attorney General and together, they said clearly that the moderator can, um, can insist on people wearing a mask so long as there's an alternative way for the voter to vote. The highest priority is that people get to vote. And we are, we will be providing that. But we'll need someone to be, to explain that to people, um, before they come in. And so I'll be out there and when I'm not, I'm gonna have an assistant moderator out there.
I quote moderator, the second highest priority is the health of the people working in the town taking votes and that's, that's what he's trying to protect too. The health of the, the workers are paramount and, um,
And, and the voters.
And the voters.
Have you got plenty of volunteers for counting afterwards? You're gonna keep trying to do that that day as you did in the past or how's that working so far?
Um, we don't have a lot, but we've got, we probably have half of what I, I would like for us to have.
Okay.
So we'll keep working at that too.
All right, I think that's all the questions we had. Do you have any other questions, Paul?
No.
Do you have any for the board, Randy?
Well, I'm wondering, are all three of you planning to be there yourselves or will you appoint, um, a pro town?
We are planning to be there right now. Um, Bob, David go home for a period of time and, uh, do some things at his home. And I might leave for a short time. We're only talking breaks. Two out of the three of us will be here at all times. That's your
Which you wanted, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
So, um, we're not talking about leaving for an extended period of time, just a small break. We have to be there from six-thirty in the morning like you do till eleven or twelve or whenever we finish at night. And we all have just a few things to do in our house, but it's the same practice we've been using.
The, um, for this election, um, um, experienced election officials are, from my point of view, at a premium. And while we've been working together at this for years now, we are a pretty small group. We've got some other people who are gonna be coming to help who have, um, no experience. So, um, it will be important for me to have the three of you there to lean on in various ways during the day.
Yeah. Could you allude to the training you're doing, just the training you do tomorrow, I believe?
Sunday.
Sunday, yeah. Um, the, um, we, uh, the, the group that doesn't have a ton of experience this year is ballot, ballot clerks. Um, I'm glad that they'll be getting experience 'cause we'll need it come the federal election in November. Uh, but I'll be doing a training with the people who haven't done it before on Sunday afternoon here. And, um, I've also invited, uh, ballot clerks who'll be working that day but, and have a lot of experience to come in and, uh, and talk about getting ready to.
And chief, just please let your crew know that if alarm goes off, they're okay to be working in there.
Okay.
If I mess up, uh, the code again.
Oh, I did it the other day.
We know what it looked like, so you've been
Yeah.
Woody, if you have any questions to Yeah, Woody, have any questions with that?
No.
Right. Yeah, well, uh, well, it, for me, the important thing is getting everything from here over to the school first. That kinda puts us in a good spot. Linda said that she would get everything out for you tonight, so it should be really plain and clear where it is. And we'll just figure it out and we'll get there.
Exactly. Linda, did you square away the lunches and whatnot?
Still working on it.
Okay.
Um, I did wanna ask you, who did you speak with from the town hall restoration committee about wanting a table there? Who was your contact?
Um, probably Margaret would be the best person.
Margaret Watkins. I just have to let her know that they're setting up at nine tomorrow.
I think that, I think that we've chosen to not have that unmanned at that meeting at this point because there's no pricing available. So they have a drawing with no pricing left on the town hall rest, restoration. So this, uh, election will not be, um, having any of that set up. So, you know, we'll look at it again in November, see where we're at, see where the masks are, see if they can be manned. Um, it made, made very little sense to have it manned when you couldn't have a conversation about the building to, to people, so.
Okay.
So I don't need to contact them without setup?
No, I'd say we're okay with that. And I think Donna set the meeting too, so where his wife was, so.
So it'll be no, no handouts?
I don't think so. Are you, are you planning on having anything set up for the cemetery?
Right.
For the cemetery and reached across that garden. And so I'll be there tomorrow morning, but
Great, great. Um, but tables are gonna be at a premium, so, uh, it's gonna be important to bring your own table.
Okay.
Now those would not be manned. They'll be unmanned booths?
Right.
With handouts for people to take home with them?
Yeah, the, yeah, handout to take and take with them.
We can set it up so that people will have to walk right by it as they're leaving.
Okay. I just, uh, my concern is, I, I expressed to Don last week, uh, the last meeting, I don't want ten people congregating around a booth. So I told him, make his booths ugly this time. Make them so pretty.
So about November.
I am gonna have my donation box for Reese so they can just drop their twenties and fifties and that.
As they walk out.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. It's gonna be interesting to watch.
You were gonna say something about November?
In November, yeah. Um, you know, requests for tables, um, at the, um, at the polling station in November. It would be helpful if you could funnel all of those through Linda. Um, it's, it, uh, it would be so easy if, if I'm hearing from somebody and you're hearing from somebody if we start, uh, negotiating with them about that. We have no way of knowing how many other people have already asked and how tight this space is gonna be. Uh, Linda volunteered to, to receive all of those and, uh, I'll work with her on figuring out how many we can actually have and, and how to work on that.
Will you also agree that depending on how it goes this time will be the, the final decision we made before? We just say we're gonna open up for tables? I mean, if this turns out to be a disaster, like twenty, thirty people congregating around, we don't wanna have any tables.
Yeah.
So it's, no, it was, I would say it's to be determined whether we're gonna have tables in November?
Trump's getting vaccinated.
Okay. Who knows what happens between now and then? Maybe we'll be able to have more.
We gotta
But yeah, we'll have to decide that before that election.
We'll have to determine how well our flow goes, whether we can even accommodate tables.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for coming in, giving us the update and, uh, we'll see you bright and early.
And Woody, thank you for your crew. And it all.
Thank you.
Good.
Appreciate being in. Linda, did you have anything else for us or are you good?
Here.
You do?
Okay.
I'm good.
Linda, if we don't have coffee, I will be leaving for coffee also.
Well, now we talked about, did you mention that?
No, I did not yet. I did not have it.
I thought, 'cause coffee's the real dilemma because you can't have the box of joe or the whatever. I mean, everybody's gonna handle it. There's just no getting around that, even if we got boxed lunches.
Every two hours, I'll be going down like the police officer.
I was just thinking that, uh, one of the selectmen in his, you know, helping out the moderator, we'd make a run for coffee at like, you know,
All right, we'll have to.
Seven o'clock, ten o'clock, two o'clock.
Oh, it's slow times.
Yeah.
All right.
And we'll be slow too.
And then just get individual, you know, take orders and get individual cups.
Okay.
And we'll make that part of that budget.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right. Um, Sergeant Ramalad, you're up.
Okay.
To discuss the CMH two, ten-year project.
So I know the, the town got a letter from Central New Hampshire Regional Planning about putting in for the ten-year transportation improvement plan at Page's Corner. Um, as you all know, we did this process back in two thousand eighteen. Out of that process, um, the most recent correspondence that I could find from the DOT was from March of twenty nineteen. Basically, as you know, we had the public hearing. We submitted a letter to them outlining the suggestions from that public meeting. And the DOT basically didn't really support those short-term solutions. And I think kind of what encapsulates it is, um, on the first page of the letter, they said, they've, uh, the things that we suggested would be minimally effective because the root cause of the intersection issues, which is the unusual three-way stop condition, would be retained. So essentially just looking for the board's permission for me to submit another, um, proposal to them for, uh, I guess a roundabout at this point, which is what we had submitted before, um, to regional planning.
Now, Chris, am I wrong or didn't they put us in like the ten-year planning for the roundabout anyway?
They did. And what I learned through getting this letter, I reached out to Dean and I said, "Are we still in consideration?" And apparently the way it works, at least my understanding is, every two years we have to resubmit a proposal to stay active in that queue. I'm more than happy to do it. I just didn't wanna do
Nice if they would've sent that in that original letter, huh?
So I saved everything from two thousand eighteen. Um, I need to check to see, you know, the, the turn count movements, monitoring the traffic volume at the intersection. I would, I would guess that that has only increased over the last two years. Traffic crash data, we can get updated, traffic crash data. Um, so I'm gonna check with Dean with exactly what he needs. There was an engineer through Central New Hampshire that did a cost estimate, which I think was around nine hundred and thirty-two thousand. So check to see if that's still a good number. The conceptualized plan, nothing has changed with that. So really it's more or less just submitting some updated numbers and statistics, uh, to Central New Hampshire. And I just, I didn't wanna do that obviously without conferring with the board and making sure you're okay that I submit that.
I think we're, we're good to keep the process going with it.
I don't think we need to see the detailed plans, but if there's any variation from the original plan, you, you should probably share with us.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Does, uh, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand incur potential cost of buying portions of land to make that turn out or?
I think it was just for the construction itself.
Right.
Yeah.
Because there may be, you know, depending on where they push that and try and keep it away from historical buildings, they may, uh, you know, end up having to purchase some property to do that. And I don't know what's gonna be available and if the people are gonna wanna sell that property or if it's gonna be eminent domain. And maybe you could field some of that out just to see if they have that in that budget.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I'd be happy to.
It'd be a shame to get to nine thirty-two and it's road construction and there's nothing in there for any of the land purchase, you know?
The beauty of it is, though, we don't manage it. It's managed by the state. Yeah, once it's approved, it's, uh, it's not, we wash our hands of it, state moves forward. That would mean acquisition of land and all that. What I would wanna, not wanna do is, uh, those landowners there, I would not wanna blindside them.
Right. And that's, that's what I kinda wanna find out. Right. And that's, that's what I kinda wanna find out.
That's, that's my concern, is blindsideing the landowners.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, I'll, I'll pose that question to Dean. The other thing I was thinking about doing is uh, one of the things that you can submit with the proposal is letters of support or suggestions and stuff like that, so we were kinda thinking about, you know, maybe posting something on our Facebook to accept feedback that I can submit with the proposal. Um, once that's part of the record, it's part of the record, so.
I think you had a support letter from the Select Board the last time, didn't you?
Yup, yup.
So if you wanna update that, we could re, re-sign that as well, I guess.
Sure. And basically reaffirm our full support for it.
Yup, excellent.
I know one part about opening that up to Facebook, it was kinda like that first public meeting we had. Ideas went all over the wood, you know, and it was hard to bring people back in.
It, it certainly was, yeah.
And they really did it on, on, you know, their accord, brought, brought it back to the roundabouts, the only thing that makes sense other than what we really have right now.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, you know, the whole, you know, there are short-term proposals, but I think the whole idea behind the ten years to get something long-term that will sustain that intersection, it certainly hasn't gotten any better, that's for sure.
Could you make a one, I'd ask you to probably make one coordinating call with Central Regional Planning. Cause within Central Regional Planning, that was a, we were in high priority with Central Region.
We were, yup.
So we thought we were.
Well, Central Region is different from the state too, but Central Region blesses it, they can push it too, so make one call to uh, Mike, um.
Mike Williams?
No, there's another one there. Uh, he's head of Central Region.
Dan?
Tardif?
Tardif, yeah.
Tardif, okay.
Thank you. But I think he might just, just to close the loop to make sure he's brought into it.
Sure.
Cause he was instrumental in making this, how, 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 helping us make it happen.
Right, right. Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to him and then uh, Dean Williams as well, he was, he was really helpful last time as far as the paperwork part.
Cause even when you know the intersection, when you pull up, it's really odd waiting to see, cause if they're coming at a good clip or a good pace of speed, you have to really time if you're gonna be willing to go out there. And then if you don't, the other people are looking at you like, why didn't you go? And now they're gonna start going in front of you, so it really is an odd situation, even, even when you know that, so I can understand if you came from out of town, it would just
Right.
seem really, really odd.
And as the board probably recalls, one of the suggestions the DOT made in the road safety audit was to essentially remove the eastbound stop sign, so you have east and west traffic free-flowing, and then north and south has to stop, and I just, I feel like that would be a nightmare at certain times of the day, trying to even get it, getting out onto Conker Stage or Conker Street.
At this point, I would think that would be worse as well, although I think, back when they originally did it, I, I think that it was a a mis-sight by doing that, only because now if there's confusion where it'd be just like every other street out there.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I also disagree with the recommendation, that they, we need more fatalities, we do not need any more.
I, I agree.
Yeah, I agree, yeah. They said we didn't have enough fatalities last time.
Yeah, it's, it's very numbers-driven, um, you know, unfortunately, but I, I think our crash statistics and our, our traffic enforcement statistics up there, I mean, a lot of the egregious stop sign violations and failure to yield, I mean.
You have, you have numbers, open numbers.
Oh yeah, absolutely, yeah. It, it's tough to quantify the near misses, but I feel like everyone in town has a story of a near miss up there. If I can get a few of those experiences down on paper and submit it with the uh, the proposal, that might bear a little more weight for it.
The gentleman behind there has to travel that road every day, probably talk about it.
Yeah, I really appreciate that, and I appreciate your breakdown of your uh, police log for the month.
Great, great.
That uh, really helps us, gives us some good insight of what actually is going on. It's one thing to look at an arrest or this or that and say, oh, when you don't know, you don't know, but the breakdown really gives us an insight of what can happen in a small town, because really the same things happen, has happened in a big town, just people don't realize it.
That's right.
I'm glad to see the statue's still there.
Yeah.
I appreciate the feedback, thank you. So I'll keep the board and uh, certainly lean posted on the, the progress.
Great, great. Deadline, when's your deadline?
I believe it's October one, but I'm planning on having that submitted uh, far before that, hopefully by next week.
No, unless he wants us to sign that letter, we'll go with that for that.
Yeah, Thursday, October first is the deadline, so I'll, I'll probably circle back around during September just to touch base with the board.
Yup.
Um, but I'll plan on getting it submitted within the next week or two.
Excellent. Thank you.
Chief, thanks for all your correspondence with the school and the parking, I think everything was well-pointed. And uh, I think that they're gonna hopefully include you next time, cause I've heard from several of the parents and they, you know, they're just getting kids back to school, and this whole thing wasn't thought about, and they were really upset about how it was handled and.
I'm sure it was an oversight on that part that they didn't include me in. You know, it's all gonna, it's gonna work out as well as it's gonna work out.
Right.
So everybody's working, we're all going in the same direction, trying to accomplish the same thing, so we'll make the most of it.
Yeah, okay. You got one officer there, two?
I got one and I'll be, I'll be there myself.
Okay.
So we'll.
We should work that way with the trees.
Yeah. All right. Anything else for us?
I'll sit.
Okay, thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda. Uh, first, I think we're gonna talk about it, Mike, only because there's some discussion on this one. There's a uh, there's a motion here for accepting unanticipated revenues, fundings for cemetery bench engravings in the amount of thirty-one hundred and fifty dollars. Don, could you speak to that just so I can have an understanding of how that money was raised and where it's at before we move it around?
Okay. Sit down. The money, uh, first of all, when we redid the cemetery, that Kernean's Garden, we put five benches in there. We had a thousand dollar donation uh, from two citizens total. And then we had a thousand dollars in ours, and that's, our benches cost is roughly two grand. And uh, when we put them in place, like, when we did the, the gravel and everything out there, like we poured the, the footings, which sat all winter, and then the spring, we put the benches in place. And uh, those benches now, because it's, we paid for them last year, are, are taken care of. So now, when someone wants to buy a bench, right, it's a thousand dollars, and we include the engraving in it.
Okay.
And the engraving, uh, uh, Ireland, Nomi Ireland was the person to buy a bench, they wanted to put one in, and I told them what we were doing, and they liked that real well, cause it's right by her grave. And it cost, I think it was like three hundred and eighty dollars, and then we decided to put the family name on the front of the bench, and that was another eighty dollars. So uh, most of them are gonna run in that area. Uh, we're gonna allocate roughly five hundred dollars of each thousand to go toward the engraving.
Okay.
Cause they have to come out and sandblast it and everything else. So uh, because that's gonna add extra money.
So these are new funds you just accepted for those benches?
Right.
Okay, so it hasn't been, you don't have the money now and you're reallocating, it's, it's brand-new money for them?
New money from, from the customer, and uh, three of them have paid so far. We've sold another bench, but we, you know, because of uh, one thing or another, we haven't been able to get together with them. And so there'll be another, you know, couple of weeks when we'll have that in the house.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we had fundraising for one thing, we used the money for one thing.
Yeah. Now, the fundraising, we've been using that for things for the Kernean's Garden, basically, and the cemetery. And I think we've got, what, three hundred and change left in that yet?
And the fundraising for the.
And the raffle?
The raffle, yes.
Yeah, so we're, we're using that sparingly. For instance, uh, the road, I have twenty-five hundred dollars in fence repair. And we put the new road in here, the bid was three thousand, came in at twenty-five fifty-three and change. So we took that fifty dollars from the raffle line.
Okay.
And uh, and, cause I had the twenty-five hundred already there. The weed spraying, uh, the bid was a thousand dollars to do the center cemetery, which he did. But then he also went up and did the new road, cause there's weeds coming up in that, and sprayed that. And it came in at eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, so we came at a hundred and seventy-five dollars underneath his bid. So uh, you know, it, we're trying to save money. The Hearst House, we had repairs on that, we budgeted eight hundred dollars. And uh, Greg, the uh, the handyman for the town, did the work, gave us a bid, and he came in under the bid, cause it had taken us as long as he thought, and the parts he needed were a lot less, so. Once again, we're, we're trying to save money, but we've got money in our budget yet. And so when we look at our projects for next year, we've got some invoices and that, so we can uh, uh, allocate that, roll that money over to those projects, you know, at the end of the year.
I'm good with your explanation, do you wanna make a motion, Mike?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five, paragraph B, subparaphrase three, to accept unanticipated revenue from fundraising for the cemetery bench engraving in the amount of three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
No, I'll give you a second.
Okay, Mike made the motion, Bob's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, and you guys can uh, accept that money. Thank you for the explanation, I just wanted to make sure it was clear stated in here, and I think that's all we needed. Um, is that all you have, Don?
Not me.
Did you wanna save it for public comment? Oh, you're okay, Kyle.
I'm sorry, I want this one. You act all right, I'll interrupt, but that's okay. Uh, one of, one of the things I'm, I'm gonna ask you though is, if we're gonna encumber money for, for something you're gonna have done, with the money that's in your budget now, you're, you're gonna come to us with whatever that encumbrance is. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, and we've, we've got a bid to finish the road going across in front of the Hearst House. And that, and uh, that also includes a ramp that will make it easy to get the Hearst out of there. And now's the time to do it, so we don't sell the spaces if we have to take one or something like that.
Kind of point of order on bids though, when you, Woody, isn't there a process for bids that you gotta have more than one sometimes?
Three telephone calls.
Thank you. I just wanna make sure the process is adhered to for accepting bids, not just single-source bids.
But it's under ten thousand, so it came in at sixty-six thousand.
Okay.
Right, but, and they, they, uh, Lean hit the nail on the head, you gotta try to get at least three calls over the phone. You know, so it's at least competitive.
We have the process for, just so we'd be fair.
I mean, we do the same thing, and sometimes you only get one bid.
Yeah.
You know, but it's, you, you gotta make that attempt.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, the next thing, um, we're gonna have a discussion in reference to our COVID-nineteen illness policy for part-time employees. And uh, that part of the agenda is done. This is information from me. What we have is a uh,
Is it in your agenda folder?
No, I have it right here. I think I do. Okay. What we have here is our family's first Coronavirus Response Act, emergency paid leave, paid sick leave. And then um, we have the Dunbaron Employee COVID-nineteen Illness Policy and the return to work checklist that we talked about last week, or last meeting. And the general travel and quarantine guidelines. So we have all of these things that we've set up. And we've only talked about the part-time employees, I think, as far as the quarantine guidance on the optional travel. And it was brought to Lean's attention that we have nothing in here that squares away pay for part-time employees, so we wanna have an open discussion in reference to that.
I think we did discuss a little bit.
We did a little bit, whatever.
Did we never put it as monument, I mean, memorializing?
Um, I'm gonna ask Lean one thing. Uh, would it be okay if we scan these four policies to each of the selectmen, we review it and make a decision on it at our next meeting, give us some time?
Yeah.
Only cause we've added to it four times now, and so it gets a little convoluted where we're at with it, and
Yeah, yeah.
I know we've done certain things to take care of the employees and cover ourselves.
But what specific area are we trying to add to?
What we're trying to look at is um, when a part-time employee um, is not coming back to work or volunteers to take a test and gets to come back in three days, if they're paid for that time that they missed the work with.
Okay.
And vice versa, the full-time, we said, right?
Can I also mention that um, what was brought to my attention is, we are having all of our, every employee sign this, part-time, full-time, elected official, so that we, they understand that we have a policy in place that will help them in the event they get COVID-nineteen. In the language of it, there's nothing there that specifically identifies a part-time official. Maybe we need to elaborate on part-time and/or elected official, I mean, I don't know how far you wanna take it, um, what, or how.
We should at least read through these policies to see, cause we do have our time employees, and, and what aspects do they um, have some right to, and what don't, don't they want to have some right to?
So basically, the part-timers are signing that document, and it says nothing about the word "part-time" and they're.
We're asking our town employees to sign this as a chair, and there's nothing inherently references that.
With the only exception being the travel portion.
Right.
Yes.
And, and the fact that they do have some rights in the event that they are working, they do get COVID-nineteen. But maybe it only needs to be updated in the title, if you say COVID-nineteen policy for full-time elected officials and part-time, that may cover the entire umbrella, just to not have.
Right, because they're all employees.
Yes.
Cause they're all employees.
And what we can do is, we'll take the four policies, we'll read through them.
It would, it would be good to look at it.
Whether we change all the headings, or just the, the first one we did, or whatever, we can kinda look into that and
Yep.
make the appropriate changes, and as we said, this is gonna be continuing, evolving work.
And just for the record, uh, Woody, I'm gonna speak about you for a minute. Woody is going on, taking vacation, he's gonna be out of New England, and he's already, he's aware of the policy. He's already been proactive in, in arranging to have a three-day test as soon as he comes back immediately. And I told him that we're basically mirroring the governor's policy.
Right.
So he's already on top of that.
Okay, anybody else anything further on that subject?
No.
Bob?
No.
Make sure I, I gotta look over here.
But it's a good, but it's a good idea to review the material.
Yeah.
But I think your suggestion, Lean, uh, would, would be the adequate suggestion, cause they're all employees.
Right.
So you don't have to differentiate between part-time, full-time, unless you do it to title.
And a lot of times they do that, cause sometimes people would wanna pay a part, uh, full-timer, not a part-timer, vice versa, so we need to look at all those things.
Right, but the, the condition that they do under there is any employee that gets that work.
And, and.
Especially if you get it at work, like you said, you know?
And we said that, you know, if you take off time, like the waiting time, if they have sick time, they can take it, no sick time, they have to eat it, right?
Right, that, that's a whole different.
I understood that part-time, part-timers don't get sick time, for example.
That's a whole different venue though, there, you know, if you get COVID, or you get it at work even, there's, they have a whole different way of addressing that. That's why it's a good idea to just, you know.
People again. Thank you, Bob.
Okay, um, the next item on our agenda is mailbox items, and we've got quite a few things in here. I'm gonna start off with the first one, we talked about this in our last meeting. There's a alternate for the planning board that has requested to be on there for a three-year term. Linda has drawn up the paperwork we talked about, it's for Ronald Silcom. Uh, they do not have any alternates as of now, so this would be a great addition to get somebody learning the planning board process.
Do you want to blow this?
Yeah, if you wanna make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, whereas there's a vacant to Ronald Silcom, and whereas there's a vacancy in the planning board in said town, and whereas the subscribers didn't have the common civility and integrity and full duty to serve his office, I, we do hereby appoint Ronald Silcom as an alternate member of the Dunbaron Planning Board.
Second. Okay, motion made, second all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We sign this and then Linda swears a minute. Aye. And it's been uh, been many years they were looking for alternates there, I think, or talking about it, so it's good to see that start. I'd like to see maybe another one get on there, cause it is quite a long curve of learning all the rules and regulations, cause on the planning board, you need to know the zoning regulations as well, so it's.
That's why I stuck two years on there.
Right.
Just so I could be comfortable with it.
And Ron was on that zoning board prior, so he's a good advocate, I think.
And he asked questions, lots of questions.
Yeah. Okay. We have a person that has asked Lean, our town administrator, uh, there was an email request, metal detect on town public areas. And this person, she had seen after she didn't give permission, metal detecting around our building here. So this person's asked if he could do town grounds, um.
He's the only one I can think of, it's not George Marsham, is it?
I don't know, his name is there.
Mike Lacy.
Okay.
He's not from the area, he's from Manchester area.
He said he's a history buff and would document and research all my findings with pictures and written details. I'm a professional and leave with any trash I may uncover, and I am very careful to surgically remove anything I may find so as not to damage the turf or grounds. I cut a half boom plug and flip it back, and then if the target is not in the plug, any swell I have to remove is carefully placed on a drop cloth and then neatly dumped back into the hole, and then the plug is reinstalled. There's not a lot of history in the ground and, and around Dunbaron, and I hope to recapture and preserve some of it with the town's permission. Look forward to hearing back from you soon. Sincerely, Mike Lacy. He's talking about um, public library areas, school areas, parks, firehouses, town hall, et cetera.
Do you?
Yup.
Does that exempt the uh, property that's under conservation?
It did not exempt that area, but it did not ask for conservation area.
Can I, I'll, I'll go further into that, the Historical Awareness Committee approached the Conservation Commission to um, do the same on the properties.
Yup.
And um, they have adopted uh, state regs that you have to go by.
Okay.
In order to do that, and uh, actually, they refused anyone from doing that, other than uh, ourselves who are a town entity. But, so the, the, the process was so uh, involved that we decided it was way too involved for us to get involved with. So my point being that, I'm hoping this isn't a. I'm hoping this isn't a backdoor to get into these properties that they've already asked to get onto.
Right.
I have a different concern. I have a concern that somebody starts to do that, somebody else notices it, then they're gonna come and ask. Before you know it, you're gonna have a lot of treasure hunters digging up, and some aren't probably gonna be as respectful.
I totally agree, I think it opens Pandora's box, in the sense that you open the door, it opens anyone who wants to get in. Because once you allow him, I'm, I have metal detector, I want to do it too. And I want to come dig holes and, and find coins and stuff. And I think is, and I want to flock, I'm gonna flock my coins and not tell you about it, by the way.
See, that's the problem, you're being specific now.
Exactly. But, but the thing is, I don't, I have no, I don't want to open the box to just, you can't make a, allow him and then not allow anyone else to ask.
I would say, just speaking on my own behalf, we should at least check into the state regulations, like Leo said.
Right, you might want to contact Brett Sinclair.
Yeah.
And he has a copy of that, and it's pretty strict.
Yes.
You have to actually present a plan of the area you're digging, graded all out and everything, so it's, it's involved.
And point water, this person was on there, came in to ask permission, and he went out there anyways and started doing it?
So I happened to be here on Sunday to work with Jennifer to go over a few items.
What's your name?
My name's Lean Kamal Towne, I'm an administrative manager. So I was in on a Sunday to assist the, um...
What day was that, Sunday, you said?
Sunday. Payroll clerk, and I looked out the window, and I saw someone out there metal detecting. So I put two and two together, and looked at the email name, and proceeded out to ask him by his name, and he turned around and acknowledged me, and then he wasn't very happy, because I asked him to leave. And I explained to him, when he came in, put it in writing, and I would bring it before the board for discussion, and his response was, well, I didn't hear from anybody, so I called the police department, and they said it was okay, but even before I went out there, I observed him doing that. And he dug it out, went dust and dirt, because everything's dry and the grass is not in good condition, went all over the place, and I'm thinking, that sounds a lot nicer than what I observed out there. He was not happy with me asking him to...
Not just that, with the age of them trees out there, those roots are right on the surface of the ground. So I would think, you know, digging around them at this dry drought here, it wouldn't be a good time.
But I gotta tell you, there's a lot of people with metal detectors. I mean, I got one, if you want me to check it out, but I wouldn't do that, you know?
We've also had, had people ask to tap our maple trees, and we've said no, so...
I don't mind waiting two weeks, but I don't, this gentleman already has turned me off, him personally. But, the thing is, I want to be fair to him. Let's look at the regulations, who Brett Sinclair has to say, then finalize it next week. I would take denying, at least for two weeks, till decisions made.
Let me reiterate what I said before, though. The, the conservation commission refused everyone else. They only allowed, were gonna allow us, because we're a town entity. That was the only reason. Other than that, it was a no-go for anybody.
And see, that, I guess I could go that direction, because whether or not you want to adopt the state regs, I don't think we should have a person digging, because it may lead to a multitude of people coming over wanting to go over on with metal detecting.
That was one of their concerns also.
That's why I mentioned George Marshand. But he'll always ask before he even does it, and then doesn't do it, till he gets an answer. But that's just one person that is respectful, because...
But the thing is, you can open it up, you open it up for this one person, then it's, then the trip, it's open up for everybody.
You got it.
Don, you want to say something?
Yeah, with the cemeteries, there's 25 feet outside the cemeteries that are protected. And back in the old days, they used to bury bodies out there that couldn't afford to go inside the cemetery, so... We don't want anything, you know, related to the cemetery areas to be compromised.
So, after listening to the public and listening to my other selectmen, I'll make a motion that we deny the request from Mike Lacy using metal detector on all town properties, including schools, parks, firehouse, town hall, and library, as he has described in this letter. And I'll let the schools speak for themselves if he wants to go down there, because we don't control that piece of property, but as far as any other town properties, I'm gonna make a motion to deny, anybody want to second that?
So you're gonna make a motion to give no permission, correct?
Well, I'm, right now, I'm only denying his request.
No, you're looking at him, but if you make it so that no one does it, then you're not gonna have other people coming forward asking. So it's up to you, either way.
Well, I, I just soon deny his request, because as Leo said, if somebody from the historical society came in front of the board, or whatever, we may determine...
Right, but that's a town entity.
Right.
No, that isn't.
Private.
Historical society.
Oh, historical society.
Just so we keep it straight.
Historical awareness.
So my motion is just for refusing Mike Lacy at this point.
Second.
Okay, motion been made, second?
Aye.
Did I really hear that one?
Well, I think is, I say aye, but I think is, I, I concur with Bob, I'd like to make another motion that we just deny public access to the property. I mean, I don't want to single the sky, I think a policy is worthwhile being made, that we don't allow any public, shall we say, violation of a property where metal detectors...
I just didn't want to make a big policy without looking into it further, because I don't know that much about it to be honest with you, so that's why we have this kind of application in front of us, so I wanted to deny it, to start with, because I don't really have the, the time to look into it and go through all the proper state things to see what's...
Technically, like Club State Park area, where people go looking, if they get caught by one of the rangers, they could, they would have to forfeit whatever they found, because that state has the authority to mandate that.
So the motion's been made, the second, and, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. This one's done.
Now, David, if someone, I'm gonna throw out a scenario here. Bob decides to get his metal detector, and he knows there's some coins out there from the, from the old home day, and he's gonna clean up those coins. Are we gonna deny him?
We're gonna send Lean after him.
Okay. But she's gonna want 50% of the...
Okay. I have a mill foil grant application for 2021 due September 15. So with the board's consensus, I'll sign this. There has been no mill foil found this year. But again, we're gonna put in for the grant to make sure that if anything's found in 2021, we'll have funds.
Yeah, so we stay on the list.
Yep. So I will sign that. So Lean, that's all set to send back? We have a building department update, and a notice that Donna will be on vacation September 7th through the 11th. And they did receive a code violation, or a possible code violation on August 20 from the police chief at 12 Purgatory Pond Road. And the gentleman was checked out by the fire department and the building inspector, and there were some small violations that were reviewed with him. And I think that he's gonna get the proper permits and take care of those. Mike had also said with winter approaching, he wanted to re-bring or regain our attention to the concerns of falling snow and ice off the library roof. I think for this year, we'll make sure that we post it like we did in the past, Bob. Coming up real early here in the fall, and hopefully that edition will be put on in the not-too-long future here, so we can protect that entry right. We have received the second payer payment on Gopher Grant. The total on this payment's 218091. And that check has been received.
Keep that check out for a minute, because your next item, I'd like to probably use that check for some pays and bills.
The next item on the agenda is the police department's extra duties on Gorham Pond Road as it refers to the COVID-19 watching out of installing the fiber optics for the last nine or 10 houses in our town on Gorham Pond Road at the end. We have some extra duty vouchers here from the place where two police officers worked, and it's a total of $252 each on 825 and 819. The telephone company left me a message today that said they're all done the construction on Gorham Pond Road, and they're starting tomorrow to install in the first two houses, and expect to have all of the houses done very shortly, so all of the fiber optic construction that's needed on the road is done, which is pretty, pretty darn quick when you look at...
I just, my concern is, uh... I want to reiterate the town administrator's concern. Lean, I'm gonna reiterate your summary of concern. What line does that money come from? And that's why I'm saying, if we got some money, that's unanticipated revenue, could that, could we, I'm asking this question, could that be used for the pay that's billed?
Does this go for after it goes to the general fund?
It is COVID-19 revenue, unanticipated. You did have departments that expended that out of their operating budget this year.
So it was gonna go in our general fund, so we could use it instead of taking it out of the maintenance fund?
You could take it out of the maintenance fund and let that lapse to the general fund, it's gonna be one or the other, whichever...
I just want to make sure we're above board from a, from an audit point of view, that we're making sure we're using the monies appropriately that's been allotted to the main, this is not maintenance, this is COVID-related.
Well, we could take it out of this money here, then, Mike, because this is definitely a COVID-19 situation, so...
That's where I'm, that's where I'm going now, and I just want to get the town administrator's opinion on that move.
You have the authority to spend every penny of that and give it right back to the departments to allocate it to one item specifically and/or...
Is it, it's not really designated to any one department?
It's not, it's, that's the whole purpose of accepting it, and...
You don't want to upset any budgets.
I think it's a good idea to use this money in the balance, go into the general fund. The amount is 218091, Bob, and we're looking at two amounts of 252.
Yeah, you're looking at over 500, so...
500.
I agree, to probably replace, to put to residual surplus.
Okay, so that's a consensus, Lean, you okay with that?
Yeah, I'll do an adjustment journal.
I think it's cleaner, too.
I'll do an adjustment entry that will show reflection of expending that fund back into the liability files.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. We have Health Trust anticipated return of surplus. And that amount looks to be 474554. Did that sound correct, Lean, medical, dental, and short-term?
474554, it's a total for medical, dental, and short-term disability.
Now, we have just been putting this money in the general fund for prior years. Lean had talked to me about today is most of these are 80/20 splits between, now that we've done it, between the employees and the town, and the short-term disability is 100% town. And she wouldn't know if we want to put this in the general fund, or try and send some of it back to the employees, but I thought it was never done in the past that way, it was always just put back in the general fund.
True, true, but what I, what I really look at conceptually is like, we have an employee who pays a share of that, and we have the town pays a share of it. Let's say it's 80/20. Town gets 80%, but I think the employee's entitled that 20% back too, because he's paying a little bit out of his own or her own pocket for that, for that insurance. And so I, if it's not a bureaucratic nightmare, just break it down. I, I'd say we break it, I'm thinking of breaking it 80/20 to the employees who pay, or vice, to the payers. Give it to the payers, it's a dividend on payments.
Now, how they come up with this amount is, is, we're part of a group. Okay, and they give us an estimated amount of what they think they're gonna need.
Right.
And so that's how we get up our payments and...
Set our rates, yeah.
And set our rates, and then we pick a group that we go with, whether it's 80/20, or we pay 100% or all that. And so we've changed those groups over the last couple of years. But this is going back to the group members, like the town is a group member, our town, and the other towns are group members. So this money is going back as a group member, not to individual employees, so... I wanted to be careful, I'm starting to spread that out, because it's something we'll have to follow year after year to every employee, and it's never been done that way. It goes back in the general budget.
Looking at 94910, roughly. You know, that's gotta be a nightmare to try to figure out what's going, what's...
That's, that's, I wanted to make sure it's not a nightmare. If it's a nightmare, I'd say just put it in the general fund.
That's what I thought, is put it in the general fund, because it also helps us negotiate and keep better, you know, rates going for the employees every year, where we get some of these bonuses back.
Right, because it lowers the town costs overall. And so next year, we're not gonna go 80, 70, 30.
And we've looked at what we've gotten back in all the prior years. So it goes back to the member group, and I want to make sure I can go, you know, it's not broken down after that to employees.
But I'm saying that could be an option.
Right.
I guess I'm just curious, do they break it down, like how much for dental and how much for...
They do, I can give you that readout.
No, 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 I don't need that, I'm just, so now by the time you break it down and you subdivide that...
So you have to break it down by the groups again, so...
And you start doing it again.
That's where it becomes a bureaucratic nightmare.
Yeah.
The medical return was 442650. The dental was $239.67. And short-term disability was 7937. And they give you the totals for Dunbar out of each of those. So, you know, we're getting this back as a town amount back to the town, and I think we should just keep it in the general fund, I think. Bob?
You convinced me.
Okay, consensus.
I was just thinking, I was...
For me, when you're looking at those, it's, it's a nightmare to try to figure out who gets what.
And it doesn't affect the long-term employees, they already have coverage.
If they elect 100%.
Of the 100%. Okay. The next thing on the agenda is something we talked about already. It was the letter to the school board from the chief of police, Dan Spedl, in reference to the parking and the cars and the voting, and I think we've covered that.
I just like the, again, recognize the chief for being astute enough to be proactive on this, hitting this right off as soon as he got word of it. Kudos to the chief.
Yep.
There's one item that we tabled last meeting also.
Okay, I'm ready here, Bob.
Okay.
The item that we tabled last week was, or at least one of them, was to make Lean Kamal a trustee of the trust fund, and we got our recommendation back, and I think it just came, well, you might not have a chance, so we'll let you read that. It looks like there was no major conflict of interest in the incompatibility of offices, but at the same token, because the town administrator is controlled, and her duties are controlled by the selectmen, the selectmen can have no overlap of their duties as, as the trustees, so he thought it would be poignant not to have the town administrator be a trustee of the trust funds.
That was an alternate, by the way, huh?
Yeah, it's an alternate. So, this is the information we asked Lean to get for us, and he's recommending at this point that we not have Lean do it.
Conflict.
Yeah, even though it's a minor conflict, it could be construed as that, because we direct what the town administrator does. So, that being said, Lean, do we have anybody else that...
Well, the point, the, the whole point and purpose of my asking to be placed on the, as an alternate, was, is I'm very involved with them on a day-to-day basis, whether it's to generate correspondence that, requesting funds, requesting transfers, communicating that receipt of revenue that they have to deposit. There's a lot of involvement on my part to make sure that they're able to do their job. They appreciate it.
And so you're still gonna do some of those responsibilities as the town administrator anyway.
Yep.
So I guess we should look at appointing somebody else.
What is the advantage, what was the advantage of you becoming the assistant?
In the past, we had two trustees that were, I'm not gonna say negligent in their duties and responsibilities, but they were not available by, with response to emails, or scheduling meetings, or just the typical correspondence or acknowledgement of what, any town business that needed to be done. So technically, what was happening is, I was assisting John Casey, who's the, was the acting treasurer, and he was pretty much running the trustee responsibilities... and he was pretty much running the trustee responsibilities with one person, which I explained to them is a no-no. You need a quorum. So, in, on my part, anytime I correspond with the trustees, I do it as a board. Every single, even if it's, I know it's one responsibility, the treasurer has to pick up a check to transfer, write a voucher and deposit it into the, or put it in the mail. All three trustees are always communicated to.
How many trustees do we have right now?
Three, and right now I have two current active ones. The third one is not shown or seldomly responds or...
So it would be nice to get another alternate on there so we could have somebody to learn the process.
It will, it would be, um...
Leo?
As it stands right now, I think I'm going to continue to assist them in the process of them doing their job. But in the event that there's only one person available to either authorize, okay, or, I mean, end of year, for example.
There's no quorum.
There's no quorum, and that was...
But I still think, because you assist them so much, I think it is cleaner if we have somebody else that way. You can still assist them and it's not a conflict too.
Yeah.
Because part of your duties are to assist them and keep them, you know, involved in the paperwork.
Should we put an appetizer now if they're looking for a ball up here?
Wouldn't hurt to put a hot topics alternate to the trustee of the trust fund. Unless Leo wants to pick it up.
Yeah, I'll let you know next year.
Put that down on the minutes. Leo, let us know next year.
Leo volunteered for next year.
Volunteer for next year.
We, they, just recently, we've had an appointment of an alternate to the cemetery trustees and I'll tell you, they click. They are a team that works well, that allows an alternate to work with a permanent member and...
Well, I'm excited to see these alternates, we just got one for the planning board.
Yeah.
They've got one now, they've never had alternates on that board. So there's a lot of these boards that are, you know, as we grow and expand, these alternates will be the next people who move up because they'll understand the process.
The cemetery people are proactive. Hot topics, we're just not figuring this out. Yeah, appetizer, hot topics.
I taught you well, huh?
And I agree with getting, you know, some younger people in these positions as well because, you know, there's a lot of community involvement, so.
And I think originally, the two that are currently, John is the senior trustee. The other two were literally written in and they, they won, obviously, because nobody else signed up to run. But they had no idea what was involved when someone tells them, oh, there's nothing that you have to do, because it's not really true.
So the thing is, an alternate can be appointed whereas the actual position's gonna be elected.
Correct, correct, yeah.
So, okay, one more one from there. I'm gonna, um, open it up for public comment before I bring it back to the board. And Don's still here.
I'd just like to say, for the Dunbar Garden Club...
For the record?
Of Don Larson, thirty-two Birchview Drive.
Thank you, Don.
And I'd just like to say that the Dunbar Garden Club is having their mum sale next weekend, the eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth, starting at noon on Friday. And will be at Page's Corner once again. And, uh, come early, come late, bring your trucks.
Page's Corner Store or...
No, we've got a, we'll have a big tent, just like we did last year. There's a flyer right there on the windows you walk in. And that way we were set up last year. So, uh, the owner's very cooperative with us and this will be our third year, I think, there.
Okay, great.
So, uh...
What are the prices of the mums?
Uh, it'd be free for twenty dollars on the mum. So we get good-sized ones and we're gonna have pumpkins and cornstarch. So they...
Really?
Yeah.
I was looking for a blonde, a brunette, and a red hat.
I'll tie it on.
Cut that out, Leo. Okay, thanks, Don. You want us to put on hot topics?
Uh, yeah, we'll put it on hot topics.
Okay.
Could you just work, give some wording to Lean?
Yeah.
Leo, anything from you?
Nope.
Okay, bring it back to the town administrator, anything else, Lean?
Just want to let you know that I've been working on the MS One totals with our programs. Been a little bit more of a challenge because of the revow. Our softwares do not merge, um, very well. So we, um, in the last two years after the fiasco we had, uh, three or four years ago, we enter the data into the system manually. That's over fifteen hundred parcels that have to be manually entered, including exempt town parcels, everything that changes, especially because the sales, recent sales have affected our land value. We need to make sure we update all the exempt properties because that affects our flood control money. So if the sales are good, the land value's going up, we have to change every single parcel. I finalized that last night, around seven o'clock. And, um, so those numbers will now be forwarded to the Department of Revenue and that information is part, one of the tool pieces that we use to set the tax rate. So, I'm glad that's behind me, I can work on, study on other things now.
Okay, thank you, Lean.
One other thing, our mapping for the cemetery. And that, we purchased a Newdel computer, it'll be here next week. And, uh, Linda Gray is a voluntary to help input all the names in there for, on the graves and everything. So, uh, she's volunteering, now, can we make, we can, we can have two alternates, right?
Two alternates, yeah.
Okay. So, uh...
Make a recommendation to the board in writing.
Okay.
You know.
That's, uh...
It's just a short-term thing, but, uh, I don't know what the, you know, she's handling information from the cemetery, so that would be, she should be an alternate.
Would you agree? That'd be fine, it doesn't matter if it's short-term and then they can get on the schedule to be on the agenda to be voted for, so.
Yeah.
All right, sounds good. I'll bring it back to the board, Bob.
Well, yeah, I got a call today from Brett Hadley from Weir. It's the other concrete guy that, uh, Matt Connor from the company in Boe recommended. Uh, we talked a little bit, so sometime next week, we're gonna meet out in front of the library. He's gonna take a look at it, uh, he'll probably take some pictures and he's free to come back, take measurements, and he'll give us a ballpark estimate, you know? So that even if we don't encumber the money, it's a go-to point to start doing an RFP and get bids.
Right.
You know, because that's gonna come out over ten thousand anyways.
Sure. Not, anything else, Bob?
That's about it right now.
And we covered, uh, the question you had was the one that we left last week with Lean, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I'd just like to have a town administrator give us an update on the finance clerk.
Oh, um, she, um, when we met last, uh, the board had reached a consensus for me to go forward and hire this employee if she was seriously considering joining Dunbar. It's a part-time position. I have a vacancy of the payroll and accounts payable clerk. She did respond back that she is definitely interested and she understands it's just part-time. Uh, she gave me her available start time in the week of September thirteenth and, um, I'll be adjusting my hours accordingly to get some training with her in her evening hours until she makes that final decision to leave her day job and is able to work for us at a flexible schedule during the week, which I'm hoping will happen.
Just a question.
Yep.
I know that we gave Lean consensus to hire her, she wanted to come to work, but now that she has, should we make a motion?
Um, I think we had already...
You did.
We made a motion or we made a consensus?
We made a motion and we gave Lean the authority to do it when she met with her, so.
Okay, I thought the town was a consensus.
No, I think it was a motion when we came out and on public question. Yeah, yeah, I think we wrote it in the minutes too.
Is it in the minutes?
Yes, you put it, you changed the minutes to.
You made them red.
Okay.
Oh, see?
Yeah.
Turns out I can change this after I read them.
Oh, no, no, I think so. You saw it, you saw it, Bob.
No, they were, they were put out there.
Sometimes I see them.
That's all I have, Dave, thank you.
Okay. Um, we already talked about the Gorham Pond and the telephone company and the call I got today. And again, I wanted to, uh, reach out and thank Hope. She is our part-time deputy town clerk. And, um, you know, she found a, the loophole in the grant that allowed us to apply for a fairly substantial grant.
And you're supposed to make a motion to accept that grant or to apply for it or something.
We are, I already signed it.
Yes.
We did talk about it.
Okay, so I stepped out and that's what we talked about?
Yes, when you stepped out, we talked about it and I signed it. We had a consensus of the board to sign that grant, so.
Okay, good.
So that's all done and signed when you were out, but I just, you know, kudos to Hope for finding that. We had looked into it, we thought the dollar value is gonna be fairly low, so we were gonna stand. And, um, you know, I think, what was it, ninety-four hundred dollars and change?
All toll, um, with a twenty percent match from the town, which is about fourteen hundred and seven thousand six hundred roughly from the grant match, so.
So it was a substantial amount of money and that was, uh, through her work and rereading that, so that was good when we applied for it and...
And so it's actually, um, the state had set the ballot reimbursement amount to be twelve dollars per ballot. So it's not what we thought was the...
We thought it was a postage when, when they talked to us and it's a dollar amount per ballot because they realize all the additional work it's gonna take the town. So, when she reread that and found that, that was, uh...
Enlightening.
Enlightening, because, I have to be honest, the grant was, uh, the paperwork was very thick and I didn't read it from the bottom, so.
And the websites are even thicker.
Yeah, so. Um, yeah, so that worked out good. So, a motion to adjourn at eight forty-one? Okay, we need to put adjourned.